Hi, everybody.
Hi, Maria.
Hi, Maria.
Let's see, is Matt here?
Not yet.
Okay. I see Francine, I see Chris, and welcome, everybody else to the meeting. I think we should just go ahead and start. Welcome to the Select Board meeting. Today is the 7th of April, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag of the United.
United States of America.
And to the.
For which.
One nation.
I do find a.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice.
For all.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Does any other committee have a quorum that would like to open their meeting?
Yes, we, the Finance Committee has, well, Barbara's here, so we have, let's see, three out of the four, and let's see, Rachel. But we are a quorum, so we call the meeting to order. Thank you.
Okay, great. So, the original purpose of this meeting was, we thought, to finalize the budget. That will not be happening tonight, as the School Committee had a meeting yesterday with the Finance Committee. And there was another meeting scheduled for tomorrow night between the Finance Committee and the School Committee. As of right now, we have a meeting, Select Board, on Thursday. I just thought it might be a good idea from the get-go, Ed, if we just got an update on dates and deadlines. So, right now, the town meeting is scheduled for the 12th of June, with a rain date of the 13th, at 10 o'clock in the morning. Correct?
Correct. Now, do you want me to read the?
Yes.
The preamble?
Yeah.
Before we start?
That's a great idea. Thank you for always remembering.
First two, into Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, Order Suspending Certain Provisions to the Open Meeting Law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, and March 23, Order Imposing Strict Limitations on the Number of People That May Gather in One Place. This meeting of Town of Southampton Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to or view this meeting while in progress may do so by, go to zoom.us/join, hit Join a Meeting in the top right of the screen. Type in the meeting ID of 889930536087, password of 504466. Hit Join. Please be sure to mute your device when joining in. Note, to join in video meeting with cell phone, you will need to download the Zoom app from the App Store. Call-in telephone number is 646-558-8656, or by watching Public Access TV Charter, Spectrum, Channel 191. In-person attendance and public comment at Select Board meetings will be suspended until further notice. If you email a written public comment before the scheduled Select Board meeting, it'll be read at that Select Board meeting. If you email a written public comment after viewing something at a live televised Select Board meeting, it'll be read at the next Select Board meeting. Please send your public comments via email to selectman@townofsouthampton.org. Please note that all public comments must be within the requirements of the policy on public comments listed in the open time for the public on the Select Board agenda.
Thank you very much, Ed.
You're welcome.
Before we get into the first agenda item, could we just review dates and deadlines as we know them right now? So, as I mentioned, the town meeting is at the Labrie Field on the 12th of June. And it's at 10:00 a.m., and the rain date is Sunday, June 13. So therefore, the articles for the warrant have to be signed off by next Tuesday, correct?
We have to have them submitted by next Tuesday.
Submitted by next Tuesday, because they have to go to the attorney, and they have to be posted, correct? So it looks.
Correct. War all will have to be posted by the 18th, I believe it is.
Okay. So, the hope is that we will have a budget by next Tuesday. And right now, we have a Select Board meeting planned for the 29th. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there, can I just ask a deadline question?
Yeah, sure. Hi, Matt.
How are you? I'm sorry, I'm late. Had some technical difficulties here, but, Ed, just, for clarity here, I mean, and procedurally, like, we have the town meeting, depending on what gets voted on at the town meeting, especially if it's with regard to election questions. Yes. There's no deadline, I mean, we don't have to have that deadline, that deadline's after our town meeting, correct? Like, for instance, like.
No. It's before the town meeting.
It's before the town meeting?
Correct.
So, like, well, then, I guess, procedurally, let me, let me just understand a few questions here, like, coming from the Capitol Committee, like, we've got a couple Prop 2 and 1/2 debt exclusion things that, if passed at town meeting, would need to go to the ballot box for a question. Similarly, if we have, if we're still interested in doing a Prop 2 and 1/2 override, that would be at town meeting, and then a, and then a question at the ballot box. So I'm wondering if there is a deadline for the ballot for these things.
And actually, I had an update later on in the agenda under Elections. And actually, the election has been called, but the Select Board has the ability to call a special election for the same day and have a separate ballot, which would have those questions on it. Those questions are, or that, let's see, the Select Board would have to call the special election and notify the town clerk 35 days or more before the election date. And I would actually recommend that it be considerably before that 35-day time limit.
And that would be in order to get any questions added to our ballot, because we're already past that deadline.
It's not added, they'd actually be on a separate ballot.
Yes, so, the ballot has already been submitted, the one that is the election that's planned for the 22nd of May. So that's already, because of early voting, my understanding.
22nd of June.
Yeah, sorry, June, that's what I meant. So, that ballot has already been submitted to be printed, and but what Ed's saying is that a special election simultaneously could be called with a separate ballot, so that we don't need, so that we don't have to create a separate date. But 35 days from the 22nd of June would put us only about a week later than the 4th of May.
Okay, I mean, my follow-up question is, how is this different than what we've, like, in non-COVID years, when our schedule's not as in disarray as this, like, isn't procedurally, we have the town meeting, depending on the outcomes of that, we have the, we know what our questions look like? And then we submit those, or is that not how it works? I'm just trying to make sure that I recall and understand how this goes.
No, generally, they would, they would be created and actually go on both. And obviously, if it doesn't pass at the town meeting by a 2/3 majority, the question on the ballot would become null and void.
Irrelevant. I mean, it still is on the ballot, but it's irrelevant.
Right, exactly.
Okay, I just wanted to, I just wanted to understand that, and so we didn't, I mean, just given how we're running here on deadlines, we obviously don't have any questions. Right?
The last year was an aberration in terms of the COVID in the state issuing a month-to-month budget, so we were very much behind the scene, and then, of course, we, in the absence of a Finance Committee. So this year, I think we were doing a lot better in timing-wise, but we're up against now a deadline, and we're waiting for the school budget to be finalized. So that's pushing everything up against the wall a little bit here. But at least we have an option, should we choose to, to not have a separate special election on a different date in the summer, if we choose to at least try to have something similarly done on the 22nd.
Okay, and are we taking that up tonight, or at some point before that deadline passes?
I don't think it's on the, you know, agenda tonight, I think that that might come to it based on what we find out tonight. I think the purpose of tonight is to get an update from the schools, get an update on the changes in the budget based on the bidding adjustment that Jen and Ed had worked on, and so, we can, you know, it might come to, where do we want to find the money for this sort of thing? But that might be a logical outcome.
Yeah, and just the root of the reasons for these questions is really twofold. It's obviously the, I mean, I have insight to the school budget, and we'll hear from Finance Committee in the school this evening, but also, like, my position on the Capitol Committee, which we submitted to Ed last night after our meeting, like, does have what would amount to probably questions on a valid election, so I'm just trying to try to make sure that we're complete here.
Yeah, okay, so what we'll do is, we'll make sure that we hear from you as well upon the Capitol, report from the Capitol Committee, okay?
Okay.
Okay, great, so, let's start, though, with the agenda, which starts with the updated revenue report. So we just got a copy today, and Chris was so nice to send out this great document that takes the recent revenue reports and kind of compares it to. Everybody get a chance to look at that?
Maria, I only sent it to Select Board, I didn't send it to anybody else.
Oh, okay, well, when we look at the revenue report, what, I guess it's, anybody can look at whatever copy you want. I mean, I think the basic information is still the same, how much have we spent on each line up until April? What was the closing date on the revenue posting?
22nd, I believe.
Okay, so it's up to date, then?
Yeah, pretty much, I think, yeah. Yeah, no, I just assumed Finance had their own procedure, so I didn't, not being part of that, I didn't forward it, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, that's okay. So you want to just explain what you did do, because I do think it is, it's help, it's helpful.
Yeah.
Excuse me, is there anything we can put up on the screen for the benefit of the Finance numbers?
Yeah, you want to share your screen, Chris?
Yeah, just give me a second here, hold on.
Actually, that's. Hold on.
Now, for the people who can't see this, this is the expense report. We.
Not, no. I didn't need to, thank you for. Long day.
All right.
All right. So, yeah, and this is, now, Ed just handed out a new, a new report, which includes the updates on the school, so this does not include that. I'm going to shrink this down just a little bit here, maybe. Oops, probably too much, hold on. If that's visible, all I did, guys, was to take the expense report that was in our packages for tonight's meeting and try to put in a couple columns. I don't know, I just have to look in, in the way I kind of approach things, I kind of look to see what our spending actually has been. So, I inserted column F and G here, which are basically the actual expense according to the 422 expense report. And then just did a remaining, remaining balance against the approved budget and a percentage of how much is balanced, that's all I did, basically, so. I don't know if you want to really use this.
This is an excellent exercise. I appreciate you doing this, Chris.
Thanks, Matt, I'm, I'm, I'm a, just a mini, mini Excel student here, so I'm thinking my, my formulas are okay, but you can double-check me.
So what we, what we usually get is how much of the line has been expended. So what you're looking at here is, so, percent, so, like, the select expenses were just over, so it's a minus one on that line, and then going on, we haven't, we still have 70% of the minutes for the Select Board meeting available, okay.
Right, so I was just looking at how much is actually remaining, given that we're in month 10, and, you know, of the year, and, you know, where, where does, does this give us any idea of, of, you know, spending issues, so that as we look at what the requests are, you know, do we need to go all the way for the, the, the top request, for example, or, you know, is this really more reflective of reality? And I guess, you know, some of these are expenses, obviously, we know that will come through, I mean, it's not that we won't be spending all of this, I mean, there's certainly, certain ones that are just not due yet, I know that it would come due next month, most likely, so. But anyway, I don't, this does not have the, the most recent school stuff on it, so I can I can just take it down, but I could, if I can forward it to, or Francine, you have it, could you forward it to the Finance folks? I don't have it, I don't have everybody's address.
Well, just like, what, I mean, you did the analysis, like, what, did you see anything that's like, like, obvious, like, obvious? That would be helpful?
Obvious. Well, I think as we go down through it, I mean, most of this first column is, you know, it's clear what, what we've done on, on the general, general government, I did just the.
Before you scroll too far down, I have a question. I did look at the previous one that Ed had sent out, and I have a question about the audit. It's, we obviously haven't paid for that yet, it's obviously very, like, overdue. What is happening with the audit?
Well, it's.
Yeah, we can't do anything with that.
It's underway, there was a.
It's 91, I think.
No, there was, it's, yeah, it's underway, and I believe there was a $2,000 expense against it so far in the latest expense report.
Okay. So it's underway.
I'm forgetting where it is. Right, Ed, I mean, I know there was an expense.
It was actually in green, it was one of the things that you highlighted in the left, I think.
It's up higher, keep going up. Keep going up.
Don't think so. No, it was this other, right here is the audit, right here.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we, we've had an actual, actual that, so we were just beginning to pay on that. Okay. Another one that was in green is this fixed asset study, which was just a marker from.
Okay.
Somewhere that I.
Thank you, that was one of the questions I had.
Yeah, so it's, it's in process, but just the beginning work has been built so far, apparently, right?
Correct.
That's all.
What about assessor, Matt?
I did. Those will be coming, I think they're, they're not due just yet, they, they have been planned for, those are the new printouts from, usually from tie-in bond, is it, I guess?
Okay.
But those are, those are the big, big maps that are due to be updated, and I think that's underway as well. Not sure, I assume by the end of May, we would have those. I didn't know, on this one, I was a little confused on the senior work-off program wages, I don't know if this is, you can tell me whether this should be in here or not, it was on the expense report, so I don't know. Some things were on the expense report, but they aren't really a budget item, maybe, in a couple cases, I don't know.
Yeah, that was just my way of noting that in this past year, that the IRS made us change our, the way we were handling that particular project, and we actually had to issue checks out of, shall we say, payroll this year for that. Where we weren't required to do that in the past.
Right, okay. And then, under the assessors, the, the triennial, there was nothing this year, because that was done last year, but the cyclical will still be happening, as far as I know. So, let me see if I can scroll down here. Nothing, you know, nothing was very, you know, egregious here that jumped out at me. There are certain things that I think will be, I think we talked about it last time, the, the election wages, because we had to pay those. I think we said last time that this was a charge that needed to be reversed, if I remember rightly. Because we certainly would, we would have spent on the November election, right, for the election workers. So that's showing, that's showing 100% left, but that's not quite accurate right now, it's got to be a reverse charge. So. What else did I do? Peg programming, we've done quite, quite a bit here. A lot of that's been spent. Just trying to look at some of the bigger items here. Just kind of jump over, and this is one, and I, I made a mistake on here. The, right, Ed, the current expense is 43, thereabouts, 43,000 on gas and electric. But I, I had thought that there was 12,000 when I last looked at the report, but I must have been looking at an older financial report, so forget my note.
Yeah, I went back, I went back and looked at the March 25 one, and at that point, it was at 42,000 and some change. And that's the account that all the, all the charges for the Cow Power and the net metering credits come into, and then they're dispersed from that account to the individual user accounts.
Okay.
So, so what does that mean, that's not going to be as bad as it looks?
Right, exactly, there's journal entries that come, come out of, out of there, then go to the individual user electrical accounts.
Okay.
So then, you're estimating that the, you know, the, the 24 and change is going to be sufficient. That's what it should net out to be, okay, fine.
So that really is a level-funded thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Obviously, town report, that will be in process for the town meeting time, more or less, so that's to be done. Technology equipment, we've still got some to be used here, and I assume that's part of some of the things that the Tech Committee are recommending.
Yes, we have, we have some, we have some items that had been ordered and haven't been paid for yet, and we have some future commitments out of that equipment account.
Yeah. Okay. So, I'll just keep scrolling a minute, we've paid up for the, the reverse 911, that's our Code Red system. That's been taken care of already. Then we jump down into the next category, which is public safety. I'll just get it up top here. Everything's looking pretty much. Oops, I must have this one, this one's in here twice, but anyway, I think we're right. I was trying to keep an eye out for anything that was like, at least, you know, 60% or something remaining, that we really hadn't, you know, jumped on very much yet, but not too many things are up in that category. So we've still got some money left toward the building expense, so, so this, for example, Ed, back on your explanation on the Cow Power and the town, town hall gas and electric, would some of those charges, for example, get moved over toward, for example, police department building expense, is that where that, some of that would land at some point in time?
Yeah, if they don't have a, a, a separate electrical account, or like, gas or electrical accounts, yes, it would go into their building expense.
Yeah, okay, so I don't see a separate account, right, yeah. Okay. And I think the same with libraries, same with fire, I believe it's all the same kind of thing, where you've got a building expense account, but not necessarily a separate line for, for gas and electric, the way I understood it. And this, we talked about last time, I think, a fire truck maintenance line was a new, new line that's being sort of disaggregated from fire department expenses this time.
Correct.
And I think, I'm thinking we had the discussion about why the turnout gear hadn't been spent yet, but I'm forgetting why that was. Because it's part of their normal routine to, to get in new, new turnout gear every year, I know John had a whole cycle that he was following there of getting in maybe four to six uniforms, turnout gears every year, is that right, I think? EMT standby, this one, I don't quite know why that hasn't been spent down, so I guess that's, that was one I just didn't know, it doesn't look like there's any expense so far.
Didn't the fire department receive a grant?
They have received a grant, I don't know if some of that might have gone to turnout gear, that's possible too. Yeah, that could be, I know we talked about it at some point with John, I just can't quite remember his answer, to tell you the truth.
It was $12,000, if I remember.
Yes, yes, it was.
Okay, okay. So, we haven't had to pull down on EMT standby, but we have, obviously, EMT wages are being dealt with. Licensing and certification, we've still got some money to go there, but that may be happening sometime before the end of the fiscal year. This, at least on the expense report, I believe, was disaggregated this time too for the ambulance maintenance. I think I had asked about that last time, because it hasn't been a budgeted item, just like the fire truck maintenance, but it is showing as an expense on our, on our April, April 22 expense report, so maybe we need to make that a separate line, I don't know. In the 50% building inspection expenses, so again, not sure how much more will really be charged there. Guess that's kind of all that category. And education, this is, again, this does not have your figures from last night, so we could probably just skip over that and then turn back to the other budget that you have. Jumping down to superintendent, highway rather. Again, things are all, pretty much, they're definitely over, over expenditure in winter roads expenses, the street lighting, I think we know, because that had been cut drastically, right, during our budget cuts last year. So that's really back to kind of a normal, would be kind of at a normal level, compared to the 8,000 that we had budgeted last year, but the, the winter roads expense, I think, is the, the one that really does. Reynolds got a challenge here, if these figures are correct here, so.
I have a question on the street lightning, lighting, how do we, how did we cut the expense? Did we shut lights off?
We did.
Yes.
Yeah, the Police Chief actually had helped us identify priority levels, and so, the, the least priority levels were actually changed, and he's actually on the call, so if he, if you'd like to say anything more about that, Ian, you're welcome to.
I'm sorry, I was a little distracted, could you go again with the, the.
He just had a question about, did we actually turn off lights? And I said that you had a priority system that we more or less followed, that we did, in fact, turn off lights.
I don't know what was actually turned off, Ed, I, I, that information was passed on to Ed to know what I ever source with.
Okay.
But there had been a, a priority listing of, you know, certain intersections, et cetera, where they needed to stay on versus being shut down, et cetera, but that was one, one thing we did do in last year's budget, when we had to do some serious cutting.
Is there any chance they didn't get shut off?
That's a good question.
I don't know.
Well, from the looks of what we've spent, we're on track, I think, for what was in the original budget.
Yeah, some, some of that would be, again, the, the accounts that the Cow Power charges are hitting, I'll take a look at that.
Okay.
All right. Down into the Health and Human Services category, again, pretty much on, on target here, I think we've talked about this before, where, you know, the Board of Health expenses are over, but there's quite a bit left in the Sharps program, and so that was, you know, one option for them, was possibly to transfer, recommend to transfer some money from, from that to cover their overages on their expenses. The mosquito control line last year, if you remember, Matt volunteered to basically fund that, and I guess the question was, did nothing happen for expenses as yet, and is that because now is the time to do mosquito control, as opposed to last August?
So just to, remember, it's a surveillance program, it's not really a control program.
Okay, well, at whatever point, nothing has been spent yet, so. Let's see. The one that's a little confusing here, I was surprised, the Council on Aging, just jumping down. Sorry, yeah, Council on Aging, actual expenses, only $16. And I think that's because, and I'm just guessing, so Francine, maybe you can correct me, or, or, Ed, if you, whoever knows, but it. Ed, if you, whoever knows, but it, I'm guessing that maybe some of those basic expenses that they have are being covered through the CARES Act, because there were things like their newsletter, uh, some of their activities for the seniors, et cetera, meals for seniors uh, were allowed to be covered under the CARES Act, so I'm wondering if if that's what's happened here, or they just haven't submitted some invoices to us perhaps. I was just surprised to see that quite so low, but.
Yeah, I know.
Yep. Anybody, I don't know.
I do know that they've gotten some um funding from the um state formula grant. Uh, they also got some things from the CARES Act, like the awning and such, but I imagine it's not a lot of money, so I imagine that there are other expenses, for example, various people doing uh classes and so forth, so I don't imagine there's going to be a lot of leftover in that line.
Yeah, I assume it it'll get spent, I mean, especially with the weather getting better and they're trying to get more activities going outdoors again too, so. Um, but I think some of those things, like their newsletter, for example, was being covered through the CARES Act money right now for a couple months anyway.
Yeah, no, you're right, and um, you know, just because they haven't operated under normal conditions, I I believe they, you know, everything they were doing for the most part was put through under the CARES Act.
Right, I mean, they've they've been pretty much shut out of out of their space in terms of being able to work there, so.
Yes.
It's in in that regard, it's normal, um, same thing with veterans agents expenses, nothing's been spent on that yet.
I think it's just that he hasn't processed some bills too.
Probably, okay, um, library was looking fairly fairly okay, I think, in terms of their drawdowns, um, maybe a little bit on maintenance, a tad bit over here. That was about it. Park Commission has a good amount of money left for whatever their expenses are that may or may not have been processed, or they may not need that full amount, I don't know. So that's kind of where things are in that category, and just jumping down. Uh, our retirement accounts, employee benefit account, rather, um, this is obviously the big guy here. So some of these were upfronted costs, we had to pay all at once, if I recall, this big eight-eighty for retirement that got paid upfront. We've done nothing apparently yet in unemployment compensation, we may not have to, I don't know. Let's see, uh, why is that not lined up? I don't know. That math works out though, so there's forty-seven thousand left in group health insurance for the retirees. So all of these percentage wise, they're all, you know, drawing down like one would expect. The OPEB study, uh, I don't know what actually happens there, we've spent three thousand toward that out of the ten. And then this was in the expense account, so I I put it in here just so that I had everything, I wasn't recognizing what this had been for, this is prior year expenses where we've actually had an actual expense seventeen forty-seven, and then prior year encumbered expenses of sixteen thousand three fifteen. So I don't know what those are.
Those do, those are when fiscal year twenty gets closed out in this case, and people have uh either invoices that haven't come in or contracts uh that uh haven't been fulfilled yet. Uh, those funds get encumbered into the next fiscal year.
Okay, so they end up on our expense report, but we don't necessarily budget for that, right, is what?
Right, it's it, it, they get carried over.
Right, yeah, so what's what's in the green here was not really a budget item that, you know, was in our budget, budget proposed budget, but rather they were showing up in the expense report, so I put them in here so that we wouldn't lose track of them. Um, and then the debt service, I know, Ed, you updated this since our la, oh, since our last meeting.
Yeah, Jen and I sat down and went went over it and uh of anything that had fallen off it and basically uh moved the uh new debt and interest uh on it from uh the uh State House notes uh for the projects that uh we had just author authorized.
Yep. Yeah, the one I guess that I was not clear on was the one for the um, for the ambulance. That's showing up on our expense report, but we didn't have it as a budgeted line, you know, when we talked about the budget last week.
Right, if that, that will, and it ends up getting uh appropriated and approved to come from the ambulance uh fees.
Okay. Okay. This, I'm, I assume this got, you had in the last report before you updated this debt part estimated amount for added debt and interest, you had thirty thousand on the previous report, but I assume you took it out now because you've updated all this, right, so.
Correct, yeah, exactly. Put, took out the placeholder and put in the actuals.
Right, that's what that all would appear to be right here. So these are the the amounts for the the debt part, and then on interest is right below that. So same thing here, okay. So I'm seeing, that's basically basically it, and then again, the intergovernmental expenses, I assume too, that shows up on our expense report, but something that we don't actually budget, right, is that the state air pollution and whatever here, so these are
Yes.
These are eleven thousand dollars that I guess we're obligated to pay at some point in time.
That they actually flow off our cherry sheet.
Uh huh, okay, all right. So basically, that's kind of where things ended up, so out of a seventeen point nine million dollar budget that was approved, we've spent about twelve point nine. So about five million left, more or less to spend. And then at the very bottom, um, Ed had given us some ideas about revenue estimates last time and a a sort of a, an idea of how that might be dealt with when the when the um deficit wasn't looking quite so much as it is tonight, so. And so this is what it was on the last last uh report that we looked at last week, where there were some suggestions about how we might be able to cover some of our our costs, and if the, at that time, we might even have a had an excess revenue figure right here that changed with the figures that I've got in here now, which took that down to a forty-nine thousand dollar deficit. And that has nothing to do with the new budget from the school that just came forth, so this was, this was prior to noon time today. Okay.
I think what Ed told us was that um, he had uh in, put in the two percent colas and also um did the figures with the um, the bids um with Jen on the on the uh debt. So, right, that's where a lot of changes came about with the uh, the um interest. So that's where we we ended up with uh forty-nine thousand, and that doesn't include um any additional um raises or any additional um
Correct.
changes to the budget.
Right, so that, you know, there's nothing that really, you know, hops off the chart at me, quite honestly, I mean, I
Yeah.
I found it useful just to sort of see where where things were, um, but nothing looked terribly off balance to me.
I think the department heads have done a great job again with um, kind of staying within the budget and trying to minimize any um unforeseen expenses. I think getting some CARES Act money has been a big help to some of the departments and supplies. Does anybody have any questions about the um expense report? And Ed, is there anything else you want to say about it?
Uh, no, I think Chris went through it very thoroughly.
Okay, is there any debt that's retiring for this next fiscal year?
I don't recall any that will be coming off after this next fiscal year.
Okay, any other questions, Matt, Francine? No, I'm good.
Okay, so we probably, you want to probably look at at the um, the the new the new budget request with with the school on it then, yeah, I'll let, Ed, you can do that, I don't have that.
That's, that's a big, that's the main reason we're meeting, so we'll, we'll jump to that.
Yeah.
So, if nobody has any questions about um, any updates on revenue other than what was just said, uh, Ken?
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead, Ken.
The revenue estimate. Is that, that eighteen-two oh four, is that for the current fiscal year?
No, that's for next fiscal year.
Okay. Do we have anything, this is, this is what got my attention right at the beginning, when when it was termed as a revenue report, I thought you had revenue numbers.
I know, my my mistake.
So we still don't have revenue numbers currently?
No, we don't.
Any idea when that's going to change?
We're work, we're working on that, but, you know, we're going back through September, so I would hope that in a, maybe about a week, we might be up to about December.
Wow. Okay, that's a big gap, but we do know though is the biggest part of that is the taxes, which I think we heard were on track, so that's going to be difficult.
Yeah, it also, I mean, it also complicates, if we don't know what we had for revenues for this year, how are we forecasting revenues for next year?
Basically, there were, as far as the local revenues go, I haven't seen anything that would take us away from what we had budgeted and would seem to be on track for for this year. The major portion of our revenues come from both state aid and taxes. Uh, the state aid, we get off the cherry sheets, and that's what I carried over. And as far as the taxation goes, uh, there's a formula uh that we use. Uh, if we want to take the two and a half percent of last year's levy uh, and also add new growth to it, uh, my assumptions were that we took the full two and a half percent and that our new growth for fiscal year twenty-two would be a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Which should be on the conservative side.
Okay, any other questions about revenue or expenses that we know of so far? Okay, what else do we know about the American Rescue Act?
Nothing further. I wish they would come out with some information to share, but nothing to this point in time.
Okay. Difficult to plan when uh, when it's a supposedly a large amount um without having any guidance, but I guess it's all we can do.
It's very frustrating, to say the least.
Yep.
Cause I think there's some money in there that we might be able to, you know, utilize rather than having it in the budget, and I think that holds true for the school also, so.
Okay, the next agenda item is the uh wage scale, and then we'll talk about the um FY twenty-two budget draft. I just want to start by saying a couple things about the wage scale, and then I'm going to ask Francine, our representative to PQB, um, and Ed to chime in on this. I just wanted to say a couple things, one is I think that every time, anytime you talk about um wages, I think that it brings up a lot of um emotion and also brings up a lot of equity issues. Um, I I believe strongly that we need to make gains on the wages in town, there's no question in my mind about that. We had a presentation by Art Lawrence in February of twenty twenty, which was not that long ago. And he had proposed, and the PQB at the time had a lot of work, um, and proposed uh wage scales in town, put plotted everybody in town on what they were making and what the minimum uh range was, what the uh middle ground was and what the high end would be for their positions. And at the time, it was a presentation that was based on a lot of work, and um the select board did not choose to adopt it. Um, I think there was, you know, it was a presentation that was very helpful. I think there was a comment made that it was based on East Hampton, it was actually made on basis of about six different towns, and it was from my standpoint, very well researched, and there's a copy of it. What I found in that was that whenever you going to make any changes other than across the board, such as a two percent cola, you have to be very clear, you have to be fair, and you have to be mathematical. So I just wanted to say that I looked at it based on the current uh people in town, and what I found was that three people in town, three individuals are less than minimum on the scale. Um, seven people are above the minimum, but up to ten percent. An additional nine people are between ten percent and fifteen percent on the scale. So I just wanted to mention that, um, I don't know that we need to decide we're going to, you know, fund, definitely get the three low people up into the range that their position, um, you know, is quoted as. Um, I just wanted to say that whatever we decide to do, I think we should know what the dollar amounts are for each of these steps. We should decide whether or not we can do additional for any positions in town. I just wanted to say that I went through this exercise just to get a sense, because I think there was some discussion last time after the last luck board meeting, what about this position, what about that position? So I actually looked where they are based on uh this, the most recent current and accurate scale that we have. And I found that there were uh those divisions of um uh wages that were less than any minimum for sure, a median uh, medium level for sure. So anyway, we can do some work to find out how much would it cost to get these three up, or these additional seven, or these additional nine up to at least uh fifteen percent uh from the minimum. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that, um, and I have the the positions for each of those, if we decide we want to talk about that, but I just wanted to turn it over then to Francine for additional uh comments. Okay, uh, thanks, Rudy, and and Ken, who's also on the PQB. Feel free to chime in, uh, as we go through this, I'm I'm not going to be, it's not going to be a long thing, I I just want to draw everyone's attention to the first few wage scales that you have in front of you, they start back in twenty, well, the first, what last one that was approved was of April of twenty seventeen, so the next recalculated or reprojected was going back to eighteen nineteen twenty, so it went back and also forward these calculations, and my only um comment that I want to make on fiscal year eighteen nineteen twenty and twenty-one is in each of those four ye, each of, each of those four years, there was not a two percent raise awarded, in fact, of the four years, there were two years when we were not able to give wages, so then that calculation throws off all the subsequent. If it's based on what actually happened, then that throws off all the subsequent tables that follow. Because we made the assumption that that, that, you know, kind of retrospectively, that that two percent would apply even be some, besides the fact that we, people never got that two percent unfortunately, but that that was the financial situation that the town was in at the time. So, as far as I'm concerned, looking at these scales would have to be recalculated based on what really happened in town, and then move forward with this two percent projection per year. What I'd also like to see is this, um, is the, this along with what Art presented as the results of the Jacobs study, how um, how they and reconcile. Because what the Jacobs study uh showed, even though it was uh February of twenty twenty, and because, and again, we're coming back to the fact that we didn't do an increase in fiscal year twenty-one, those wage the salaries that are quoted in it are actually correct even as of today. So I would like to find a way to to reconcile the scale with this, with this kind of grid that lets us track each position of where it is today for the occupant who's in it, and where we're looking ahead for them or other, any other occupant that would fill that position going forward with the, you know, proposed minimum.
and where we're looking ahead for them or other, any other occupant that would fill that position going forward with the, you know, proposed minimum along and going back and looking at the scale for that year and and kind of matching it up and seeing where we, seeing where we are and how realistic it is for the town.
Francine, can I just clarify one thing? Um, you're referring to a chart that PQB has been using where they added two percent back to February's uh two thousand seventeen.
Right.
Um, so there's two separate scales we're talking about. My, I was making reference to the twenty twenty February scale that Francine just said was accurate that PQB presented to the select board, and then she's also referring to a different scale that PQB uses uh currently um that they added a two percent to, but that is not based on the actual COLA increases historically.
Right, okay. And the reason I went there is because that is the scale that's in our packet. And I'm looking at documents in our packet. So Ed, if you could put that up, then people could see, envision what it is I'm talking about. I'm sorry, I didn't I didn't realize uh that you were referring strictly to to the Jacobs one, which is certainly, um, you know, a a reference document that's invaluable as far as I'm concerned. Um, and for planning future, how how are we going to um equalize uh the inequities that exist in town, the ones that you mentioned? And then going forward, you know, um, making certain that we we can uh bring people along this scale as as uh, you know, that's our, that's our plan, that's our intention. The reality hits when we come to the, to what we're talking about tonight, the revenue and the other expenses and how we manage that. So.
The current draft of the the budget includes a two percent COLA for non-union personnel. Um, we, it does not include any additional increases. I was just trying to um give people a chance to say this is what we found on the various wage scales. And so if we decide um either from wherever source that we want to do something above and beyond the two percent, then there are ways to do it that I think are fair, mathematical, and um not sort of just based on sort of certain positions just going up. I think there, we have the data to say this is off what the range for this position should be.
Are you, are you looking at trying to make some of those decisions tonight, or is this just a preliminary discussion? Because?
Just to show, uh, to follow up from what we had researched, Francine and I, um, from what we had researched from the last discussion, when Ed had mentioned a few positions that he thought were off, I went back to the actual scale and did uh computations on which ones are below the minimum, which ones are above, but only ten percent, and which ones are ten to fifteen percent.
Good.
So that's, uh, and I'm certainly able to share that information if people are interested, but that does, that's not translated into a recommendation. That was just to let you know uh what I found, and then we can decide, you know, what steps we want to take uh when we go over the budget.
Right. I I think the scale that Ed included in the packet that the PBB submitted is a, is something that's very useful when we're scoring positions and, you know, when we're issuing, uh, when we're hiring new people, when we need to find their appropriate place based on their their background and their experience, their number of years of experience, and then plotting them on that scale. But I do think, though, we should be using as the yardstick what is in this Jacobs study, and I'm sorry, everybody who's on this doesn't have copies of both and could understand a little bit better what it is that we're referring to when we're talking about these two separate documents.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Okay, so I guess we can just have that discussion about um whether or not there's uh you know, what we're going to be able to do this year. Um, but right now, the current budget draft includes two percent COLA increases, and I can, I'm happy to share the data they have in terms of which positions and how much below and all that. But that's all I really wanted to say at this particular point is to let you know that that data is available if we decide that we definitely want to need to um do more than a two percent COLA across the board.
Yeah, well, maybe that's something that we could put on the agenda a little bit more for more discussion next week when we meet on Tuesday. You know, if we go through this tonight, and we've got another meeting on Thursday, right, we should be sorting through as much as we can on the budget tonight to look at the real big picture, I think, and then say, okay, with that in mind as something that we would like to do, you know, how could we make that work, given, given some of the restrictions that we have?
Right.
But.
Do all of you have perspective on what's going on over at the school? I know the finance committee does, and there, if you don't, and you haven't seen that, there's part of me that's like, I'm not willing to spend the time this evening having this discussion, because there's such uh, there's such an expense that's coming from over there that, and part of it is unavoidable due to contracts that it really, without that piece of the puzzle here to discuss, like, as much as we want to do all of those things, like, it's hard to consider them when that data point is not there. And, you know, I'm not just speaking for myself. I mean, I was at the meeting last night. There's there are numbers that are coming from the school that are, that we're contractually obligated to, that there's really no other way out of here, and then there's collective bargaining issues. I think Francine was on some of this call last night, and I mean, he was on, and I was on the whole thing, so.
Yeah, Matt, I want to have you update um, let me get the next agenda item. I think that the the point of making uh the point about wages is, um, obviously, the school percentage came in higher than the two point two five, which was a placeholder, so that's obvious. And so I think that if there's an interest in uh having an override, for example, then I think that uh we may choose to say, well, we also want to put forth this from these other departments, and then it wouldn't be sort of just isolated to the school, which might be advantageous for the school to have and for the town, and and to just also be uh thinking about uh doing an additional um uh line items for an override. So that was really the only.
I don't disagree with that. I totally, I wholeheartedly agree. I wholeheartedly agree with that. I just felt like we were trying to arrive at some sense of a balanced budget here, and I just
Yeah.
while I would love to do this exercise tonight, because I'm all for doing things in advance. I just, I, I think.
Well, I think the point of tonight's meeting was to actually talk about what has been done, calculated, uh, known from the last time we met without a plan to come up with a draft. I mean, I mean, we're gonna, there's that update uh that Ed told us about, but I think it's only just sharing what we have done, learned, heard, know from the last time we met. So I just wanted to share what I found out from the wages, and I wanted to see if the finance committee or Ken, who's on the PQB, has anything else they'd like to say about wages.
I guess I would have a, a, first of all, a question. Just some edification. Um, of those four years and the two years that we didn't do anything, was it presented to do something? Was it requested to do something and it was turned down because of budgetary constraints? Or or was it not addressed?
Francine, do you remember?
I I would, I would have to think that, yes, I mean, that was always, it's always a consideration, but the reality was we couldn't afford it, and that was unfortunately the hard decision that the select board at the time made then, and what we had to make again for this current fiscal year that we're in.
Yeah, I mean, this past fiscal year was a four percent cut across the board to all departments. Uh, the state revenues were horrendous, uh, and it was, you know, COVID-related. Uh, one of the years was a override year that actually passed for the first time in a very long time, and that did enable raises. Um, and then, um, I can't, I'm not sure about the, um, one of the other years was a COLA increase, and the other one was no, none, and I'm not, I don't recall exactly the details on that.
I guess the, the other issue that I would lay on the table, and it just from the standpoint of procedure in the future, I think when the budget is being formed, wages should be at the top of the list rather than where I think it is now. Plain and simple, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, Ken.
Yep, point well taken, yep.
Okay.
Any other comments from anybody else? Okay, then we're going to move to the discussion about the budget. Huh?
Francine.
Go ahead, Francine.
Oh, she's, yeah, I had that problem earlier.
What's up?
She's on mute, and you can't get off.
Oh.
Okay, and the other thing is Barbara Simorsky is waiting to get in.
Oh, thank you.
There's no one on the waiting list.
Yeah, this happened to Greg, too. Um, just for full disclosure, Greg, like, you weren't showing up. So this is obviously happening to Barbara, too. Uh, they they have the right meeting coordinates. It's, there's a huge delay in uh them showing up in the meeting room, it seems. Because I verify, just worth, I want to just throw this out there. So if you're texting with her, just have her be patient. I mean, Greg had to wait an upwards of ten minutes for it to show up on Ed's screen, and I was texting.
Okay.
And and he had to do it twice, but it didn't matter. He was using the right, he was using the right meeting login both times. So they, it's not, there's something going on behind the scenes with it showing up in the uh, in the green room or the waiting room or whatever you want to call it.
Barbara's here, here now, and.
Okay.
I'll let her.
Thank you. Okay, um, so any other comments about wages before we move into the budget discussion, the full budget discussion?
You know, and I just happened to think of something.
Go ahead.
I have to make a disclaimer about that comment that I just made.
Yeah, yes.
Because I'm an employee.
Thank you for uh clarifying that. Yep, he's a uh van driver in our um senior center. So thank you for um pointing that out. Um, let's start with the school update. So either John, um, Lumbrue, uh, Matt Rowland, Ken, whoever would like to start, if you could just give us an update summary from last night's meeting and where the school committee is at in terms of finalizing the budget.
Why don't we uh, why don't we unmute John?
And then chime in as we go along.
Could we see those figures, too, on the, on the screen?
Yeah.
Can someone project up um some numbers from the school?
John, you there? You should be up here.
Yeah, yeah, I'm here.
You have something to display, or would you like me to uh display what you sent to us?
The email from earlier this morning they sent to you and Ken?
Yeah, do you?
Yeah, if you want, if you want to, if you want to put that up, I'm working off my phone.
Is that what you want me to do?
Sure, that's, that's a good summary from, well.
Yeah.
We have one that Ed handed out that had the updated school figures in it, just, just a couple hours ago.
Let me just see what that, what that is.
John, are you preserving video because of?
Uh, I can, I can try and turn it up. Well, I can turn it on and then see if it freezes me.
There you go. Okay, just wanted to make sure that you identify yourself. Um, we're good. If you want to save the video, it's okay. We just have sort of a rule that that you should identify yourself in video and audio. So if you want to preserve, that's fine.
Okay. So, um, while they're printing that up, I, we did meet last night for um a period of time with the uh finance committee. I think it was a very um productive meeting, and we went line by, we started going by line by line through the entire budget on the area, and even areas that we can't control. Um, the school for just background, the school's budget is made up of what we look at as three sections. The first section is central office, and that section is pretty much cast in stone. By time it gets down to the Norris level, because it's tied into the regional budgets that are already set. And then we look at the operational piece, which I'm going off memory right now. I think we were at five five point five million, and if we took the expiring budget and we used the placeholder of two point two five, that put us around four point nine.
That's correct.
And so that gave us a overage of like, what, six hundred and sixty-six thousand and change.
You got it.
We then administration put forward several suggestive items. We acted on some, but not all. And I shared um with Ken and Matt um details. I want to say it was a cumulative. We approved a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars worth of cuts. Almost all of them had to do with either um trying to support the, the investment in the technology that we just made and or adding additional supports to keep the current student population within Norris to slow or reverse the out-of-district placement that's happening um with, within the system.
John, that was about seventy-nine, wasn't it?
It could be. I'm just, I'm just going off memory.
Yeah, it was. One seven eight eight sixty-four to be exact, so.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the big thing, the big thing that came, that became crystal clear last night is that, um, and I don't want to go too far into the details, only, and I'll explain why, but out-of-district placement, there are four children of Norris that are in, that are being placed out of district, and the cumulative of their placement, each school is a little different, each child's getting a little different uh amount of money, I think comes to sixty, to sixty-eight thousand dollars per student. Um, again, I, I don't have my calculator in front of me, but I want to say it was two hundred and nine thousand, so you divide that by four, so we're about fifty-two thousand dollars a child. Our expiring budget was only sixty-seven thousand dollars. So that increase alone puts it at a starting point of four point two percent above our budget. So, so even if we didn't do anything else, and we'd be at four point two percent starting without factoring in contractual wages. So if you add in the contractual wages of um two to three percent, depending on which budget you're looking at, and I didn't average it, you know, the, the best we could do without violating contracts would be sitting around six point seven five or seven percent. I also shared with um Matt and Ken, and and they're free to forward it on to you um to to their boards, um, each cut that we made, the explanation as to what the future impact of that cut is going to be, and it's just as a matter of just sharing background on what we were thinking. So I, I believe that got us down to just over nine percent, a nine percent increase if we don't take any further cuts, and the only place left for us to cut right now will be to cut staff.
Yeah, and just to, what, can you just explain like the, the contact piece, because the board may not understand this, but, you know, and you can explain the details, but we are absorbing not one, but two years, and and it might be three, because we're looking at the next year. Like, the way the contracts were negotiated, we got so delayed, like, basically, you, you know, they have to go back to the, the end date of the previous contract, and given how long negotiations took, we went two years without having a contract, if you remember that from the school.
Correct, so.
The year is absorbing two years of contractual increases.
Right, so the, the biggest contract we have is with the Teachers Association, which has about seventy-five members. That contract uh ended in fiscal year twenty twenty or twenty nineteen. We negotiated it in twenty twenty, because, so we were already into the budget when we negotiated that contract. There was a compromise made within that contract, and and this, this, some of you may remember this, because this all came up about a year ago when, when the contract was sent, well, not a year ago, nine months ago, when the contract was sent to Town Hall, that there were, there appeared on its face to be some large adjustments. Well, what it was is that there was over about fifty percent of the membership was about to hit that final step, which would have triggered a ten percent increase. They would have then been maxed out. So during negotiations, we, we um were able to negotiate spreading that over three fiscal years versus taking it all in one year. So we avoided a, a massive ten percent jump that would have crippled the budget a year ago, deferred that, added three additional steps, knocked out the lower three steps, gave them an adjustment for COLA, which brought them up. So the, the annualized impact of year one was, I believe, three point eight five. We bud, we had a placeholder of three percent in our budget, so point eight five is being carried over to this year as a catch-up. In addition, this year, their contract calls for two percent, so we're getting hit with the two percent for this year, plus the point eight five. What's the point eight five that we had to absorb from the first year because we were unable to conclude negotiations prior to the passing of the budget.
Plus that additional step that we used that we spread over three years to try to avoid a ten percent massive increase.
Correct. And the funding source for that, because the budget passed, was to utilize our surplus and deplete our. School choice or student choice accounts. Which was the only spot we had left to go this particular year of unrestricted funds.
But there's no money in there because you've deployed those funds for COVID resources this year.
Correct. It was a, a double whammy. It was a bad year to have the COVID.
Well, thank you. That actually is very helpful, that explanation. Who else wants to talk about where the current school budget is? And this hasn't been approved, correct?
Correct. We were going to, by the end of the night, we decided to stop where we were and to kind of look for. Suggestive feedback tonight from the select board of finance. If there was. I guess we were hopeful that we justified why we couldn't be up to two point two five number because of the school choice or district placement. And if there was a new target for us to try to work towards, again, knowing that. Pretty much any additional cuts we have to make, we possibly cut a little bit from utilities on a, on a hope that we can shut the, the HVAC systems off. Other than that, the, the only spot left to go is staff. So. We're prepared to have the discussion tomorrow night. We just need a target.
I have two questions. The sixty-eight thousand per student, what kind of state reimbursement is available for special education when you end up with these very extreme? Somewhat individual situations. And also out of the, you said there was nine items or for last night's meeting, there were nine items that were requested by the administration. What was, what was recommended and what was cut? I know you said the technology and some of the keeping kids in district for the emotional, psychological were retained. What was, what was cut?
Matt or Ken, could you read off of, from that email?
Yes, is it in the body of the email or is it in the Excel?
It's, it's in, oh, the Excel. So if you just share the Excel, you won't share the privileged confidential information.
Yeah, and this is from your email that you sent today at two fifty-five.
Yep, to, right, to you and Ken.
Ready, here we go.
So this Excel represents all the cuts that were made. Yep. So just reading from left to right, you have what the initial request was, what the dollar amount was. How much we reduced it by? In most cases we zeroed it out, but you will see.
And then this number right here, folks, is the number, like this is the overage, the original overage. And then this is what the incremental decrease is based on the cuts last night. So we're, we've got, they're down to four, they're down to nine point nine two percent increase of four eighty-seven.
Right, but if you go back up there, the, the overage also includes the placeholder number that was thrown in at two point two five.
So when you're. So it's actually nine something? I mean, eleven something?
According to the, the report that we got from Bobby, the most recent one, which was today. They're showing a twelve point three nine. That report is showing twelve point three nine.
I, I would defer to Bobby for the accuracy of the numbers since this is just my work product here.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. I mean.
I would say that on that two twenty-five at your meeting last night. But that cell that Matt is highlighting right now, I, I, I noticed that I did a mathematical order because I should have zeroed out the full amount. So I dropped an eight, I dropped, yeah, so that should be seventy, negative seventy-eight thousand two eighty-seven. But most of them we zeroed except for that one right there on the special ed teacher. Instead of eliminating it altogether. We, we are trying to hold on to it as a halftime person. In hopes to bring in it, bring it to a full time at a later date. And we sacrificed an interventionist. At another spot.
John, one thing you were talking about last week when we met, I think, was the, the questions you all had about special ed versus something else. You thought something was maybe double counted?
Right. And, and so that's what we really dove into last night. And so there's two line items, out of district placement, which is the two hundred and something thousand dollars, which represents the four children that need to be. Placed outside the district because we don't have the proper resources at Norris to support them. Yeah, I don't, I don't want to go any further details on that for fear of potentially identifying one of the children. But the other spot is there's a correlation on the transportation and I thought it, I thought there was a double dip there, but. It's not because each one of those children are going to a different school and therefore they require their own van pool. And that annualizes out to forty-eight thousand dollars per child to transport.
And what about the question I asked about, I mean, you end up with certain years, certain students with special needs. How do we get reimbursed for that so that it, it's not one school district that gets overwhelmed with expenses?
So there are, there are two, two ways that we will get reimbursed. The first scenario is if they are a child of special needs who choices into the district. Then in that particular case, those additional. Costs associated with that go back to their originating district. The second way is the, I believe it's classified as the extraordinary circuit breaker. Which is a revenue line, which is below our budget. It's at zero right now because that, I believe Bobby said. That that generally comes in the second, the second or third last week of the fiscal budget. So sometime in the last week of June. And in that case, they'll say, based on what's available for state funding. If, if it, if we caught, if it costs us seventeen thousand dollars a child on an average and. One particular child happens to cost us twenty, then we can apply to get reimbursed. And I believe Bobby said that that's usually, it has trended at seventy-two cents on the dollar. And it's a one-time money that comes in at the end of the budget to close out.
Okay, so it's not guaranteed. You don't know that until the end of the year?
Correct. It's strictly, my understanding is it's strictly based on the, how well the state does on collecting its revenues. And, and then in theory, I believe what Bobby said is she then uses it for the next year.
What are the questions do people have about the local school committee budget, local school budget?
I just have one question. Can I, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I was very interested last night as you were talking about class size. I've been, was a teacher for twenty-eight years in a high school and also I did program supervision for many schools. For nine and a half years, which meant I went to watch teachers get their degrees in teaching. And it seemed like Norris had very, and I love, I love kids that almost understand this, but it seemed like the class size was very small.
Yes, so by contractual agreement, we will, we will strive to keep the average class size. No larger than twenty-five, so that's twenty-four. This particular year, because of the COVID restrictions, we've shrank, shrank in the classes even smaller. Till there's no more than fourteen children per class to maintain, right, to maintain the four feet of separation. Or to try and maintain four feet, but that's not under a normal year.
I didn't see new teaching position in the budget though, is, is there? Are there new positions, teachers in the budget? There's just. The reduced size?
No, what we did is we utilized substitution pay for a long-term sub to add the. I believe it was the third grade or second grade. Did add one, but it's only a longer, long-term sub out of this budget.
And none of that could have been covered by any COVID funds?
I don't know about personnel. I, I don't believe, we didn't, my understanding is we didn't utilize any surplus fund or COVID funds for, for personnel issues.
No, I, I, okay, even though they wouldn't have otherwise used the, the subs for that purpose. You know, under normal circumstances.
Great.
So I, I would, I would, I would think that that was a potential reimbursement, but that's, that's past. That's not. Current unless the, however long this, this goes forward, at least until December, right Ed? This current CARES Act goes into December thirty-first.
Care that, correct.
And there's only about nineteen thousand that's, you know, I mean, there's not a lot of money left that, of what we got, correct Ed?
I think twelve or thirteen thousand left.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Unless they, you know, provide additional funding.
Not much, okay.
Any other questions?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna speak to, you know, being a parent through this, there's a couple of other parents on here with school age children, but like, I mean. You know, and I, and I, this is not, I mean, the teachers did an unbelievable job this year, like it, over and above. The toggling in, the toggling out, the school committee did a great job with this too. But I mean, like at the end of the day, this was not what you would characterize as a normal year. And I think we'd be very misguided if we think that there's not going to be somehow negative consequences downstream to what happened this year. With, with children across grades preschool through, through sixth grade. I mean, everybody learns differently and maybe there were some, and there probably was that, that. You know, did very well in this environment with it being remote a lot of the time. But I mean, just to summarize, like. You know, we were in school part of the days, we were remote for some of the days, we went in full and we had to come back. There was, there was a lot of like juggling around and the teachers did. A fantastic job trying to provide learning throughout a, a difficult scheduling environment and the kids had to be super flexible. And adapt to all of this, but like, you know, I don't know how many of you are parents or how, you know, how far away from you you've been from kids, but like. A child's routine is basically like a mechanism for them, like keeping them within routine, keeping them within that box makes them feel safe. That's where you get kind of the best behaved kids. That's where you get the best engaged kids. Like I'm, I'm speaking from. My kid's standpoint, but in my circles with other parents, like routine is critical for kids and we did, while we did the best we could. I, I wouldn't say that we stuck to routine this year. It was impossible. Everybody in every walk of life, including adults, needed to be flexible. And so with that being said, like, what are the consequences of it? I, I don't think we accurately know. I certainly don't want to catastrophize, but I think to assume that. That there weren't any and that, you know, special needs and special resources aren't going to need to be deployed to try to catch. Some of these kids and that there's not going to be a greater volume of need in order to catch these kids back up to grade level. You know, we're doing, we're, we're. I, I, I would feel that we are putting ourselves in a, like while we're looking at a pretty deep hole right now and this seems an insurmountable mountain, I feel like this mountain has the chance of like really getting high, much higher than it is right now. And so. You know, what do we do? I, you know, we'll collectively come up with that. It's just that. I, you know, there, there is a fear in me that this kind of gets worse, like if we don't, if we don't take active steps at trying to do the best we can to address it now. Cause once, you know, as we've seen with some of these out of district placements, like it's hard to negotiate those kids return. And so it's.
Yeah, definitely. Point well taken. I mean, my heart's gone out to parents and schools. I think our town, when it comes to police, fire, highway, I mean, I think that everyone has done a phenomenal job in this pandemic. And certainly the schools have had incredible challenges, learning new technology, trying to keep everybody safe. I'm just in awe of what people have been able to do. The, you know, the absorbing in a, in a budget where we, you know, have a two and a half percent levy of six hundred and something thousand, I mean. It would, it would hurt other aspects of the budget. I mean, it's hard to absorb that. So I think we have to have a conversation. We know by DOR, we're not supposed to use operational stabilization. You know, we follow certain rules that are sound financial practices and we're going to find ourselves, we're already over, even before the school, we just found out by like. Forty-five, fifty thousand dollars. So I mean, decisions are definitely going to have to be made. But I just wanted to see if there are other people that have other comments in general about the budget or specifically about the school.
I just had one more question, Reenie. Just back and following up on, on something that I think John said. You mentioned, I think, John, if I saw that chart correctly, that you were looking at probably reducing a special ed teacher down to halftime. Is that what I understood? And I guess if that's true, then my question was why, given the givens and part of what Matt's kind of described here, why would you choose to reduce the special ed teacher amongst all the teachers? In terms of their timing?
Right, no, that was the initial request there is to add one full-time new, new special ed teacher.
Okay.
So we're saying let's, let's start with only one halftime.
Okay, I misunderstood. Okay.
I think from a demographic standpoint, you know, like you mentioned, the enrollments have actually gone down and yet our senior population is growing by leaps and bounds. And so. I just think that there's a lot of, you know, requests, there's a lot of needs and it's always very difficult. There is, these are always difficult decisions. I certainly, for, for me personally, the school committee is an elected, elected board by the voters of Southampton. And so if they make certain decisions, then I certainly would want things to go in front of the voters. I'm certainly don't feel like it's my job to prevent things from being voted on by the townspeople.
Greg has got his hand raised.
Yeah, Greg is on school committee. I'm not sure if we're like how you want to handle this, but like, you know, he's been.
I'm happy to hear from school committee members.
Okay. Ed, you gotta.
Unmute, he's got to unmute. He's muted, okay.
Here we go. Hi, everybody. Can you hear me now? All right, thanks. I'm still driving home, so bear with me, just hold over for a second. So I don't have the exact number in front of me right now, but to show you what the impact is. At the high school level, because I also sit on the Hampshire Regional High Schools Committee, is that we've had a massive increase in the number of students during the second and third quarter who failed their classes. We had to take strong interventions to do what we could to do to help these people. We're talking about hundreds and hundreds of additional classes were filled by students. We don't have quite that granular data at the Norris level, but you can certainly expect them, there to be a relatively similar negative impact on the students. If we don't act quickly. To intervene and stop this, now this is going to be a lifelong deficit that everyone of these students may potentially face for the rest of their educational career. Also, I'd just like to point out that all the other, you know, elementary districts. For example, Williamsburg, for example, are not having these funding concerns. So every one of our children that's going to be going to Hampshire Regional, unless we take action, is going to be at a lifetime competitive disadvantage to every other student in this, in that school. Is that what you want to do for our children? There are ramifications downstream from this that exceed that from any other group that's facing a funding deficit here today. I really want to say that, you know, if the budget money can't be found, so be it. But there are going to be negative consequences. I would expect that if that's the case, we might see a declining enrollment in the school going forward. Thank you.
One thing that I've, historically, as you know, has had a pretty high percent increase in the budget and then with Southampton being the last town to vote. Four towns approved the budget, Southampton always had to sort of. Approve the budget and then take away from other areas of our own rest of the budget. In the last couple of years, they have done a lot of creative financing to put things out over to capital. Until the last two years, they've come in at less than two and a half. Are there funding across the line items that are, are able to be funded elsewhere? Such as, I mean, you haven't, you haven't spoken yet. Such as, I mean, you haven't you haven't spoken yet, Matt, about capital, but are there items on the current budget that? Would be eligible for. Other sources of funding besides the operational budget.
I mean, I wish, I mean, the school had a small, you know, I I'll share this later, I mean, the school had a relatively small list of capital items that that. Were requested of the capital committee, there was a there were several of them, they were all relatively uh small in nature, uh masonry. Buckle carpeting, the rest of the sidewalks, like, I mean, but nothing like glaringly major and obviously not included in their. And their budget, I mean, my review and listening to the budget, I mean, they we've been, we we also took up discussion. An email that. I mean, we we've gone so far as like trying to see if we can. Like drop some of the transportation costs if if we basically buy our own van like and to see how that would work from a scheduling standpoint, I mean, there's. Issues there because they're going to different locations.
Well, didn't we already do that at Hampshire?
I think so. But you know, if you if really, some of it depends on schedule and route and like where they're getting dropped off, you know, it's so. Cause they gotta get all dropped off at the same time, right?
Yeah, okay, Barbara, you want to say something?
Um, just a thought, uh and and Matt, you you're always so. Up to date and well informed and I do love the kids, so don't misunderstand this, what about using Uber? For a year for the different kids, would that be reasonable, would that be safe, would that be?
I mean, that's interesting. I just don't know if it's legal.
It's a good point.
That might be a liability.
What? What, Ed?
I don't believe it would meet the required safety requirements for those transfers transports.
Yeah, I mean, I love the idea and I love thinking outside the box, I mean, I I'd love to also.
Can you just mute, um we're getting a lot of background noise, thanks.
I I what I can say, Barbara, uh you know, uh their their meeting's going to be tomorrow night, like. If it's anything like it was last night, it's going to be a ton of creativity because uh they've got some. Uh, pretty hard decisions ahead of them and I, you know, I'm not, I'm not envious of their position because I felt like we were in this position last year too, making these. Decisions late into a night that were hard to make as a as a select board, so like I. The creativity really comes out when your back's against the wall and I think theirs is and then ultimately that's going to trickle down to us again, you know? So you're gonna, we're all gonna get creative here for sure in the next, by the end of this week.
Yeah, well, the reality is we're going to have to create a balanced budget and we're going to probably have to have more than one column. In terms of uh scenarios. I think we've been here before, it's not a good place to be, but it's a necessary place to be. Any other comments then about uh the budget, any recommendations, uh we have a draft, uh like Ed said, that has. Two percent colas, uh the the difference between what we saw last time and what we saw this time. Was the difference of a five thousand dollar or so uh surplus and now it's a, is it forty-five or fifty thousand dollar? Deficit with the adding of the colas and also mostly uh the interest. Uh on the debt.
About forty-eight thousand dollars in that. Budget tab one, then when you move to budget tab two, which would include the. The actions Norris uh Elementary School Committee took last night, it's about an eight hundred and thirty thousand dollar. Deficit uh because uh besides the operating expense associated with the school. Uh, there's about a hundred thousand dollar increase to the local transportation and there's also. Uh, about a hundred and twenty-eight or thirty thousand dollar increase right now. To vocational uh tuition, which is a number we usually take a stronger look at and. Cut it down from. All the students that have applied because some won't go to a lesser number.
Okay, so that's eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars over, that includes the forty-eight plus the three uh lines that you mentioned. So is there um any value in the the select board in looking back at various lines or do we just take this all into consideration? And wait until tomorrow night when the finance committee meets with the school again and wait until there's a voted on budget. Does anybody want to go back and look at any particular lines and make any adjustments now or wait until uh after tomorrow?
I mean, I personally don't think that that exercise is is like is helpful, so I'd I'd vote for me to waiting till tomorrow, but also I I would just add like. I think that all each of us, like, given what we're what I think we're gonna have to do tomorrow, like. Or whenever, there it's not tomorrow, it's Thursday, right? Yeah, I mean, I think we just need to critically think about how to fairly do this because. You know, I I don't know, yeah, I don't know the answer to this question, so it's not leading, but I think each of us needs to come to that meeting. Looking at what the numbers are that we get from the school, plugging those in, seeing what the difference is and figuring out a way like, how do we do this fairly that's fair to all departments? Like in that, you know, we're not targeting at all. You know, so I don't know how to do that and I and I and I can't imagine how it's going to be, I think it's going to be different than last year, though, I I. I don't know.
Do you know the dollar amount on the um back wages we owe to this um contract for the teachers at the school? I know it's point four eight, do you know what that dollar amount is, point four eight percent?
John, can we unmute John, he might know.
Hopefully I just did.
No, I don't I don't know what that number is off the top of my head, I can pose the question.
Okay, I mean, I think we've been told that operational stabilization shouldn't be used for operating budgets, but this is an expense from a previous fiscal year that wasn't budgeted. That might make it different for me anyway.
That's not a terrible idea, I I do like that idea, I'm not in favor of operational stabilization either. Uh, and it pains me to have to say that, but it I'm not, because it just it what it does is it just makes this problem harder next year or. Still there next year, it it just ends up having to be addressed, so it's kind of.
The true definition of it is, you know, to, you know, I mean, we're basically paying in this fiscal year for a previous one, so for me. You know, that might make it something worth considering, but I also know that we're advised, you know, to have higher balances in those accounts. So that's just something I was just curious about, that's all.
Well, can I just, can we walk that through a minute? Because maybe I don't, maybe I don't understand, like, when we, if we use operation stabilization, it doesn't increase our basis. So it doesn't, like, we still are under the constraints of two and a half in that year, we use that to prop up what's otherwise operational items. That aren't like going away, they're not one time, I assume this is creating a couple of assumptions here, but assuming that we use it to. Prop up some operational items that aren't necessarily going to fall off the following year, and if we're not increasing our basis. On our budget off of it. I get, am I missing something, but like it, it doesn't necessarily, like, we don't. We don't pick up any benefit, I don't think, in the following year, do we?
No, and we just uh serve to um. Make our bond rating more risky, so. I was just curious to see what the dollar amount was out of curiosity more than anything, because it isn't a expense that technically was incurred in a different year. Curious, so um any other questions or any suggestions as far as the current draft we're working out of? Off of?
No, and honestly, I mean, having gone through the exercise, maybe futile, but putting in the expense report, you know, to date. I mean, there's nothing that really jumps off of that that says that we're wildly, you know, in excess in certain departments, I'm I'm not seeing it anyway. So trimming, you know, trimming it down and and making some six hundred thousand or whatever go across the board is. Is going to be a monumental task compared to last year.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred and thirty, yep. Yeah, yes, it's a monumental task for sure, um but I think we have to wait until we have the numbers in before we can then go through the. Task of um going line by line again and that's will happen either Thursday or next month, uh Tuesday, or a back is kind of up against the wall by next Tuesday.
Yeah, hopefully by Thursday we can sit down and look at that again, but.
Can I just ask if there are any thoughts from members of the finance committee? You're just gonna listen. And what happens tomorrow night, and then you might have some recommendations after that.
Yeah, I mean, I was at the school committee meeting as well.
Yes, I know.
And. Yeah, mon- monumental, I think, is an understatement. But I'll hold that in advance until we see what happens tomorrow night.
Okay.
Anybody else, Mary or anybody else from the finance, Barbara, any further comments or questions?
Mary has her hand up.
Okay.
Regards to the Esther two grant funding for Norris, I believe that amount was seventy-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. We did receive a memo from the superintendent and I believe that was the figure, so you have a little more than the forty-six that's listed right now.
It's actually now, you'll see it listed under the tab two column.
Okay, I must be working off, and this is the uh document I received from you this afternoon, it doesn't, it still shows forty-six thousand.
That there should be another column next to it. On the tab two.
Oh, tab two is blank on this one.
Would you, uh the one I I emailed you uh folks. After the meeting started, the latest that included the Norris, the the most recent Norris budget. You might find it there, because it 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 was in there, the tab two was deleted. In that version.
Yeah, that's the one that went out to all of you, so you should all have the same.
Okay, and um so is there a plan for using that seventy-six something? Esther funds, I mean, what are the restrictions to the use of those funds?
Find that out tomorrow night.
Okay, all right, so I guess we'll just hold off then on the uh school and general budget discussion. Uh, we can have, pick up on the wage uh thing, we can pick up on the schools and um. Discuss sources of funding after tomorrow night. Uh, Matt, would you like to um give us an update on the capital?
Sure, um Ed, is it fine if I share my um what I sent you the other day?
No, go ahead.
Or did you want to take a better look at that?
Yeah, I don't think I've got that on my flash drive to.
I got it if you if you're fine with me sharing it.
I'm fine.
Ready, go. Everybody see this?
Nope, I can't.
Big enough?
Small, it needs to be a little smaller, maybe.
No. It's good.
The end of it's right here, and there's no other columns over here, yeah. You all see it, so I'll just quick summary. Capital stabilization fund is currently funded at hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars. Operating stabilization, um five hundred and twenty-four thousand five sixty-five. And free cash at seventy-one thousand five ninety-four, Ed, the the only thing I'll say about this is I believe these numbers incorporate the assumption that we will. Fund these the way that we typically do a town meeting.
Correct.
I added the previous balance to what we would anticipate funding them at the town meeting.
Correct. Yep.
So that's where these numbers will be once we do that at town meeting. You all following me so far?
Yep.
So over over here, um like we've done before. We're looking at um using um free cash to to fund, you know, our MS four stormwater, given that that's not necessarily going to be this. Year over year. Expense and we've done that kind of in the past, that was something that that Ed had brought to the table, and so we've kind of got that uh bulleted. Uh, right here.
And that number is less now, it's like twenty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty or in that department.
Okay. So, so we've got that and then the rest down here is what we took up. And voted on and so you know, solicited request for, we got quotes for everything, there were some things that had some um holes. Um, in it initially, so that hence we hence the reason why we had two meetings uh to go through this, but we reached out to department heads and they. They readily got us the information that we requested or joined our meeting um at times to uh provide us the additional explanation that we needed. Um, and so as you can see, when you kind of come down this list, um most items are approved out of the capital stabilization fund. Which is the hun- you know, the hundred and fifty-two thousand five ninety-two, and then there's some other items. That are larger in nature that we've. Proposed doing out of um of debt exclusion, two and a half override. For the much larger items and then we've kind of give given at the the jurisdiction to as we have for. Smaller vehicles like we've done for police cruisers and and such. Where we've approved short term borrowing as well as a two and a half override and and that that'll be, you know. Um, to under Ed's purview is kind of why we we gave the uh flexibility there, because that's what we've done. Uh, previously with those. And so, I mean, I can go through these one by one with you folks, or if you if you're looking at the list and have any questions. Surrounding this, I'm happy to answer those, so it's really just how do you wanna? How do you want me to present, do you want me to?
We're just ask what people have a question, some of them, you know, pretty self-explanatory, um what questions um? Do Francine or Chris have?
I'm I'm good with this.
I'd like to know a little more about the Greenway issue.
Yeah, so Greenway, um we so background on the green, we had um. Paul Fergal, am I getting that right, Ed?
Yeah, yes. Paul forgot.
Yeah, he's, so he joined our meeting and I thought that the, I thought that. I mean, for me, having them, like, I don't have, I didn't have all the history of the Greenway and I I think I've disclosed that publicly in these meetings, I'm willing to learn and I'm willing to have. My my kind of eyes open about it and he it was great to have him at the meeting because I got some, a lot of information that I hadn't. Uh, previously had, but um. Short story, maybe most of you know this, but background on the Greenway, you know, Greenway project is estimated around six million dollars, we have that money funded. By the state in a grant that's. You know, reaching expiration, right? I mean, we've had it, I think, for a couple of years and we've got to start making progress on that or else we. We lose the six million dollars to build our Greenway, in addition to that, we recently got. Uh, an additional sum of money, a hundred thousand. To fund the acquisition of of the uh rights to the to the Greenways.
In somebody's, Barbara, you all muted?
Yeah, somebody's making quite a bit of noise.
Barbara, would you mind muting uh your computer or Ed muting her so I can keep going?
Yeah, it's Barbara.
Okay.
Okay, um. And so we got that hundred thousand dollars to 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 acquire the rights to the Greenway. Which I think has pegged it about.
Three fifty.
Yeah, about three fifty and so. So we want to you, we want to utilize that money and so the thought process from the capital committee is while. This is an extra, this is an extraordinary spent expense still and also in a COVID year that it, we just didn't feel like. It was within our purview to keep this from the voters, especially given that it was number one on the list from. It, I mean, it's on the ma- it's in the master plan, it was also number one on the list in that survey that we sent out, it got. I think it got close to eight hundred votes, if I'm not mistaken, I mean, Chris, you would probably know more information on this, but it is a high priority of. The people in this town, and so we just didn't think that it was within our purview to not let the voters decide this. And given that there are no other funds to. are no other funds to utilize, you know, this is what, this is what we approved. Does that make sense? So it basically acquisition cost is three fifty. We have the hundred from the grant. There's an additional twenty thousand dollars in legal. And so that's why we, we bulleted out the two seventy number.
Yeah, that's fine. We have put in, just so you know, we have put in another grant as well, which we'll know about in July. So we may, I don't know if we happen to be lucky and have this pass a town meeting and get a grant will be, will be golden, but.
Yeah. And so that was brought up and, you know, the strategy of this, you know, I'll put to the board and I'll, I'll, I'll put to Ed, I think, I think what we were worried about, Paul was worried about, and I think what we obviously need to worry about here, if this is, if this is a priority that we, that we want to do is we've got to start making progress here. If, and again, you know, depending on where you sit on this, but we got to start making progress on this in the similar ways that we have with the East Street Bridge. Like if we don't start making progress and showing progress, the six million dollars that we have to build this is just going to start to evaporate. And we're already kind of two years away from that. And we haven't made much in the way of progress. So I, like, we did discuss that and it was brought up and the thought was, well, maybe we wait and see. But then if we wait and see, we're really just kicking this can down the road another year. And so to talk that out a little bit further, like, is there a possibility like that if we approve this at town meeting, it goes to the ballot box, it gets approved, like, we kind of wait and hold? And see if that grant comes in, is that grant predicated on us not trying to do something like this ahead of time, whereas often grants are, whereas like, look, if you tried to go for this and you got the funds for it, then you can't get the grant. I mean, like, the strategy here is getting tougher because the timelines are getting tighter. I mean, we did discuss all of this, but I'll put this to the board because I don't have all the answers. But you know, we only do capital requests every so often. It just feels like this would pump this out and it would really roll the dice on that grant. Which I'd love to get and not do this.
Yeah, when it, when it was Clearwater Woodland, we were also anticipating a grant. We didn't know the amount of it so that it was presented to the voters as one figure and possibly another figure, and they would have to have approved both of them so that we'd have options. This reminds me of the bridge on East Street. We got a million dollar grant. The town approved an additional two point five. We didn't want to give up the money that we had. So I think it's just the way we have to write the article.
Okay, so I, I love that. I think that's the way we got to write it.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing is, you know, you can bring it forward if it passes and we get the grant, we don't have to take any action on this.
Yeah. Because, because I think the grant was written specifically for the land acquisition. It was not for construction. It is specifically to acquire the right of way for the rail bed. So, you know, we wouldn't know probably for, I'd say, two to three weeks after the town meeting is when we're well, early July, let's say, is when we should find out. So yeah, so I think if we pass this through the voters and it passes, fine, but we wouldn't maybe act on it if we didn't have to until we got the results of the grant because the grant we can't use for anything else. So if we are lucky enough to get it, I sure don't want to turn it back.
Yeah, and so we wouldn't, so we would know the answer to this before a valid election.
Three fifty, that's great.
Into the one hundred?
That's in addition. It's a separate grant program.
Wow, that's great.
So, so my question, sorry, I might have just not, so we will know the outcome of that grant prior to the ballot box on the election.
No, we won't. We'll know, we'll know by about mid-July at the latest, I would think.
Okay. So does the fact that we are doing this, does anybody know if by doing this and then sending it to the ballot boxes as we're planning to do, assuming it passes a town meeting and we do that all in our election cycle? Does that jeopardize this grant like in any way? Because we're we voted to fund it hypothetically. Do you know what I'm saying?
Grant conditions that would make it null and void.
Say that again?
I don't remember anything in the grant conditions that would make it null and void if this passed.
Okay, because like where I'm coming from on this is like if you had previously considered a request for capital or applied funds to it or tried to go after it. I mean, remember some of this dot, this, this verbiage in CARESAC stuff, like if it was.
Right, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that none of that verbiage kind of existed in this.
And I think we would have, even if we get this grant, I believe there's, you know, a level of matching required for that. So some of this could still be used for that too, perhaps. So I think as long as, you know, we don't, we don't have to act on this until we, you know, we can pass it through town meeting and get the vote and so forth. But if we didn't have to start using anything until we know about the grant, then I think that's fine. Because definitely the grant is, is pretty pretty one size. It can only be used for that one thing. It's not flexible for any other thing.
Yep.
Matt, I have a couple of questions about some of the things here. The E code three sixty bylaw program, is that that online bylaw? We buy and they have a whole set of bylaws that we can adopt as a town?
It makes our bylaw process a lot easier. And it is that whole online system that you're referring to for bylaw review, a ton of, I mean, Lucy brought this to us. It was great. A ton of our neighboring towns are using it. You know, this would be the initial fee for the program. And then to add on, we bolted onto that initially was our, our, I think it was stormwater. I gotta, I gotta look at that. Our storm, there's a bylaw.
That lands bylaw.
That lands bylaw.
Right.
And so we, we bought that one too. And then, I mean, this is just going to make everything way easier than what we.
How does this, how does this impact the current bylaws that are being reviewed by our attorney? And is there, is there an annual fee to this?
There is. It's super small though. Like it's in the hundreds of dollars. So that we didn't, I mean, we looked at that and we were presented with that and we understand that, but it was not a significant number.
Okay, Francine, you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I, I do because, you know, state regulations change all the time. And the benefit of this program is that it main, it keeps our bylaws in compliance with what the state requirements are. The other thing I'm looking at and hoping for as a result of this is maybe we would chew up less legal expenses as a result, if this is all this company does. You know, and it may take less or no time on our attorney's, you know, at least less time on our attorney's part, which would be ultimately a savings to the town.
Okay. Um, just two other things. One is the, the one ton pickup truck with a plow replacement. That seems low to me. Is that accurate? That would only be about forty four thousand dollars?
Yes. It's not, it's not one of, it's not one of the big ones. It's, it's a smaller pickup truck.
Okay, all right, all right. The last question is, you know, I think this past year with the pandemic, a lot of people have been focused on emergency planning and we've talked a lot about a generator for Norris. And when that was presented to Norris, the superintendent at the time or whomever had said something to the effect, well, we totally support that, but that would be a town expense for the school, not a school expense for the school. And I agree, that's really a town emergency planning expense. And I know it's not part of a capital, but I just don't want to forget about it because we did put a generator over at the current town hall. And I just think we have to be thinking about the ability to have a larger space. And Norris is a logical larger space to be able to have a backup generator. So I know there's nobody, I'm not sure, maybe the emergency management director. But I don't think right now there's advocacy for that, but I just don't want it to be forgotten because I think it's an important thing for us to do as a community.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that either. And I, yeah, I know, yeah, I think emergency management director should, you know, I'd probably just be to revisit that.
Mm hmm. I just also wanted to say that I reached out to that smaller subgroup that was looking at, remember, we had the presentation on the envelope study of the Old Town Hall? And there were dollar amounts and improvements and I think they were parsing out which ones were safety issues versus whatever. And I had asked them if they had any plans to submit any capital expenses, and I don't think they're there yet. So I just wanted to mention that I did check in with them about that because we certainly want to maintain that building.
Yeah, that's a priority for sure.
Yep, we're waiting on a report from the, from the engineer came to take a look at the drainage issue. So hopefully we'll have that in, within the week. That may give us some ideas, but we may, may or may not have anything to put forth at this point.
Okay.
Ian has his hand up. If we don't have anything else amongst ourselves, just to, I want to point that.
Yeah, thank you for letting me know. Sure. Chief, you want to say something?
I'm trying to find him.
All right, thank you. Just, just two things I wanted to, to point out is just for a matter of accuracy, Matt, for the police, it's actually two gas boilers. And the boilers are for thirteen thousand, not thirteen thousand apiece together.
Yeah, but we, we, we knew that and I appreciate that. I'll, I'll add that right now.
And relative to that grant for the Greenway, I just want to make sure the majority of the grants that I've written, I have to certify a condition of non supplant, of supplanting of funds. So it seemed like there was some, maybe some uncertainty of whether or not that, that that could happen. I'd, I'd make sure you, you check that before you apply for this grant, or it goes in front of the town, because if you get the grant afterwards, you can't use the grant.
Wait, so say this again? I'm sorry, I was typing.
The majority of the grants that I've applied for and received, I had to certify a condition of non supplanting the, the funding. So what that means is just recently, for instance, the fire chief and I were looking into a grant for a, a utility vehicle for a lot of the remote areas that we can have access to. If that grant requires that the town, if, if there's funding for the town, if, if the town approves funding for it, and we get the grant afterwards, we can't use that grant for it. It disqualifies the grant. And I, I believe that Chris had mentioned that earlier. She, she brought that up about where that falls into place as far as when the town, when the, the town meeting is, and when that grant notification or, or, or the grant actual award is announced. If the town approves that money, there's a possibility that you won't be able to use that grant. That's why you want to make sure in that grant application that there was not a certification for a
Yeah.
For non supplant.
You're saying it way better than I was, but that's like what I was stuttering over a minute ago.
If that's still in question. So I think it's important that, that, that gets verified in the application.
Before we, before we go ahead with this at town meeting, because otherwise we should pull this, probably.
Precisely. And that's why, and I don't, I'm not sure whether or not, you know, John's request for the, the UTV, but I had told John Workman, pull that request because if we get this for grant, if we get the, if we get the grant for the UTV, then we won't be able to use the UTV if the funds are approved at town meeting for the UTV.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
And that's a back, that's a backstory. That's the, the UTV isn't on here for that reason. And we coordinated that with Chief Ellingsworth and Chief Workman.
So I just, I, it seemed like there was some question on that. I just think it's a very important that you, you, you make sure before.
Yep. Yep, no, exactly. The grant committee is actually meeting tomorrow afternoon. So we'll have a chance to discuss this too.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about the capital request? Okay, let's go back to the agenda then and see what else we want to talk about. Elections update. You did.
Yeah, I just, I had. Yeah, I had put that on here just to let you know about the if we did have ballot questions that the select board could call for a special election on the same day as the regular election.
Okay, well, that's good to know. We'll definitely keep that in mind.
Can we, can we just, can we, like, does it, is it helpful to say that we are going to do that? Or does it not matter? I mean, because we don't have the questions yet, or?
We got, we got to notify of all, I mean, you could take a vote that this particular time that you did want to have a special election on June twenty second. And at least that's in motion and started, but then we also have to actually have the ballot questions to go along with the actual letter of notification to the town clerk, so.
Now, the notification period is thirty five days before the election, is that right?
Or more.
But, but at least thirty five.
Right.
So where is thirty five?
May nineteenth.
Yep.
May nineteenth.
But I, I would like to put this together. Once, once we have our meeting on the fourth, we should actually know what is yes, the, what items are moving forward. Maybe a special meeting the week after at the latest. I will write the, I will write the ballot questions and the select board will have to approve them.
Okay.
Okay. Wait until we have more information and just do this all together, then.
Yeah, we can tie it all together.
Can we just like add that thing to the agenda so that we make sure that we do that? Because I mean, we're going to have questions and it makes sense to try to be efficient with this.
Yep, absolutely. So we're talking about adding that for May fourth or adding it for April twenty ninth?
I would say May fourth.
Yeah.
All right, let's do that then. Next agenda.
Lucy, Lucy has a, her hand raised.
Lucy, do you want to add to that?
She's muted.
And the camera too, I guess.
Yeah, the camera's got a.
Lucy, can you open up your?
Can you do your video for a quick second?
There you go.
Um.
There you go.
Sorry, Ed, did you check with elections on all these dates? Because I remember on April sixth, I sent you an email saying that the deadline was April thirteenth for filing questions for the ballots. For the June twenty second, for the June twenty second election, it goes by the original filing date, original election date. Did you check with elections on the special election? Information?
No, I have checked with KP Law.
Okay, but KP Law? You have to check with elections. I sent you three responses from elections.
We're going to stop that.
All right, I need to have all the information to me because I am the chief elections officer. Thank you.
We'll check that.
Yep.
Okay, Ed, if you can confirm that by Thursday, that'd be great. So we have that information. Okay, so any other items that anybody would like to talk about? We're up to any other necessary business that cannot wait until the next select board meeting, which is actually April twenty ninth. Just so you know, next meeting, we are starting with an executive session to discuss the contract with the fire chief. And then we will go into an open session for a period of time to continue discussion, the budget, and that's primarily the agenda item. So does anybody have any other necessary business that they'd like to talk about now?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Any update on the status of the town accountant?
Ed, would you like to speak about that?
Oh, we're still in negotiations for a town accountant at this point in time. Nothing's been finalized.
Okay, I have a question. The bridge on Route ten is, must be just about to be started. Is there an update on that?
No, they were supposed to start. Their original plan was the second or third week of April. I know they do have to meet with conservation before they actually start physical work on that. And I don't believe that meeting has taken place or been scheduled as of yet.
Okay. And the East Street Bridge, any update on the Mass Works grant extension?
I know that is into consideration. Uh, no, that, uh, is into consideration. We should probably know by, I'm hoping by next week. Uh, as far as that goes, and we're just about ready to put the bid packages. Out, uh, to be available for that project.
Exciting, super exciting.
Yeah, it's good to get those things moving. Any other, um, business that people like to talk about?
No, just, just an update for related to Concom for a second, just in terms of whether we've got to go back out to bid on the, uh, Manhand Meadows yet.
I, I've gotten a few responses back. I haven't gotten a- all of them. Uh, back, I hope we'll have, hopefully we'll have those by the end of the week.
Okay, did we think our bidder is, is qualified or not necessarily? We don't know yet.
We don't know yet.
Okay.
Okay, so we have no, uh, PCF's licenses, permits, or warrants, um, or documents. Although there are some documents down at Town Hall to be signed, I believe.
Yes, and they need to be signed by tomorrow, please.
Yep, I'm going down in the morning.
Do they have to be notarized?
Uh, no, they're in my office for signature.
Okay. Alrighty, and how many signatures are on it already? Any?
Yeah, I signed today.
So we need two more.
All right, I'll be in tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm going down in the morning to sign the warrant anyway, so.
Okay. Uh, next then is minutes. We have two sets of minutes, December fifteenth and March ninth. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes?
Yeah. I, I had, I had one thing on the March ninth. And that was on page three. For the open space report. It's, it's. The correct. It's a five oh one C three, not a five oh three C. Organization as a nonprofit, the Friends for the Open Space. Under the quarterly reports section, Open Space Committee Cindy Palmer. Third line down. Could be five oh one C three.
Yeah, they're transposed.
Yep, yep, good catch.
Well, the, the one is missing. Five oh one C three, yes.
Yep.
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 And transposed. A two for, okay.
Good catch.
Any other edits or? Changes?
Didn't notice anything in particular.
As usual, they're very detailed.
Yep.
Um, could I have a motion then to approve them?
I move to approve the minutes. Of March ninth and December fifteenth.
All right, Francine and then Chris.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Uh, any for, there are the comments. All in favor?
Roland, I.
Groden, I. Okay, so the meetings, like I mentioned, are this Thursday, the nine, twenty-ninth and next Tuesday, the fourth of May. Um, open time for the public. The Select Board reserves a portion of its meeting for public comment and encourages participation. Um, and so forth. Is there anybody from the public who would like to be recognized? Okay, seeing none and we have no executive session. Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
I'm moved.
I'll second it.
All right, Matt and then Chris, all in favor?
Follows I.
Roland, I.
And Groden, I, uh, thank you everyone for joining us.
Finance committee will also entertain a motion to adjourn. However, you said.
Bauer, you're muted. We can see you saying.
They're all muted.
Get to them hopefully, they're moving around.
While he's trying to unmute, I just want to say, Finance Committee, you guys have done a fantastic job this year and. But, you know. You just really have. I mean. It's great to work with you. Appreciate it a lot. We've desperately needed it. And so thanks for stepping up to the plate.
Yep, hear, hear.
Thank you. Well, I need a big bet. Coming Thursday.
Thank you, Matt.
I tell them, man, I tell them that all the time and I'm so glad that you mentioned it as well.
A lot of work.
Um, I know you noticed I've been sipping, so everybody have a, a little glass of wine after all this.
How I know I couldn't hear you make the motion?
I got it mixed up. Read the motion, was there a second there?
I get a second. Seconded by Rachel. All in favor?
I.
I, Rachel. Here we are.
And, oh, all right. Thank you, folks.
Right, thank you. Thank you for the school committee also. It's, um, it's a tough place you're in. So, uh, thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.